Appointment calendar, you have possibility of fifty-two pictures. A week at a glance type of thing, you have possibility of fifty-two separate pictures, where you have a little bit more variety possible.
Perhaps, there's so much that can be done. I would assume that if we start doing this, that we're gonna put out an annual calendar. So you may have to think of it in terms of what you're gonna do this year and then what's gonna be done next year, because you don't want to have, you try to throw in everything in one calendar, which would exhaust all of the things that we have to offer. But you do want to have things that are gonna have greatest appeal. So maybe keeping with what Stan said about distribution, in terms of selling hundreds of thousands to particular organizations and let them distribute for free, maybe you need to do some thinking along market lines, in terms of what would appeal to Anacostia residents and junior league types and foreigners, whoever, who's gonna receive it and what's gonna be appealed. I don't think we could really decide that today. I think you have to really do a little study on it, try to figure out what should go into the first one, because that's gonna help determine the success of the second and the fifth one.
You know, I hear from discussion, I hear from discussion, several things going on. From a management point of view, I hear you saying, "We're not sure just what should go into this." The other, we're not sure what the outlet should be, you know, at least those two things. The other thing, whether this involves technicalities, a matter of judgment, that the board, they don't think we want to get into in detail. But this committee, as not unlike the other committees, was appointed by chairman, and I don't see the board needs to get into these details. And I would think, and this is just my own thought, and it's up to the body to decide what we should do, that based on discussion here today, which has been very rich and very meaningful, and it's gotten some technicalities and some very good suggestions and recommendations, that the committee follow some of these suggestions and deliberate a bit more and let us move from there and not necessarily come to a final vote today. Because you have the authority to go into those details. You don't need the board's action to move along and develop any more so than the Public Affairs Committee has. So, can, as the young lady said...
Well, can we follow through on the motion, just to give them backup support?
Yeah, I'm ready for the vote. All those in... Right, okay. All those in favor of Mrs. Smallwood's chairman's project?
So yeah?
So yeah.
This is what Stan said, authorize the name we have established.
Those opposed? You have it, Mrs. Smallwood. Thank you very much. Is there further...
Now, what about the, does the board, well, this is what, these are the recommendations that I was asked to bring to the board from the committee. And that the board, well, we talked about it in prior to the Council of Government and the standards and total speed of contact. What about the time limit being established for the life of an exhibit? That's another...
I think we take that under fire.
Yeah, I don't think, yeah, I don't think we can decide.
There's something in the recommendation that we await the report staff report feasibility. So I don't think that...
Yeah, right. I don't think you need any action.
I think Mr. Mayo will also refer to that in his comments, use on the agenda to discuss the president's.
Did we motion to authorize them to contact the proper people relative to the mini bus or dollar bus concept?
No, we didn't. I don't think they...
I so moved, I so moved that we authorized this committee.
I don't think they knew that, Stan.
They'll be there.
The committee did.
You know, some of the things is, when people start out, you want this stuff to be in your record, the board approved these actions that the staff is carrying out, so that the staff don't come back later and you've been acting around, you know, you get some of these other groups in this transportation stuff too, you know. I think we ought to build our record here.
I think that was the thinking behind it, that be on record that the board has approved these, that the staff move along in this direction for these police things.
I thought the committee was doing it, I didn't think the staff had to do that. I thought the committee was doing it. This committee is appointed to do this.
On this calendar, that's gonna be a lot of work for some staff personnel, you know, as far as the layout is concerned.
Well, you have authority for that. You have authority for that. We've just voted on that.
Okay.
But I mean, there's other business of contacting other groups and all, I don't think the committee needs to have the board sanctioned for that. You're already authorized by the chairman to act, any more than any other committee. I think you get hamstrung if you gotta come to the board for a vote for everything you do.
Recommendations aren't supposed to come to the full board to get authorized anything.
If you're talking about finding out, what they're talking about is finding out some information, and that's not, you don't need to go out and get...
They wanna go to have it, they wanna be able to have the board's support, that we wanna establish this, their route, which signifies, and they gotta develop, you know, they come to the Anacostia Museum and receive throughout the community and be worked into the regular transportation system in some way, I think that's what they're saying. And they wanna feel that when they go there, they have authority, the board, because all of us come from various, because we'll take with us back to whatever we represent, most of the representative community maybe, or ourselves, you know. But I think you need that, I imagine, because you're talking about establish a route, you know, and you wanna be able to write with authority, these people say this is what the people in, on this advisory board of Anacostia community using wants. Then we can in turn get this general support from all of those organizations, that they all support us. That's the kind of action I think, this is, you know, you really asking for something here. See, because if the dollar thing is set up where you're supposed to be able to just die, you see, and it comes to your house, pick you up, but I thought we were going even beyond that, you see. We're talking about establishing food, like we're going places at Chicago, there's a bus going to Chicago, you know, museum, that's the kind of thing. And then sell Anacostia kids.
Okay, Mrs. Smallwood, on that.
Now, what did we decide on the time limit? What was the time limit on the exhibits? If somebody else was gonna address it?
We would wait for feasibility stated by the state.
Yeah, this is what, yeah.
Yeah, on the bus situation.
That the recommend that the board take action to have the original name of Vernon's Food Store.
I question whether that's in the purview of this board.
Well, we're looking at the history, you know, of this community, and that's part of this function of this museum, to look at the landmarks, and that's what we've got staff here to do, do the research on it, they're coming here with a recommendation. And you're gonna run into, you gotta go to the board education and ask them, so you gotta have authority, this board, to do that. See, I think that's one of the problems we've been doing, you know, you go out and you speak for yourself. You gotta speak for your organization, that's what we're building here, an organization of a structured body that can act.
But Stan, did we do that alone or we do that in conjunction? This kind of thing, in conjunction with other...
Not alone, in a sense, but the initiation of this action is coming from this particular board. Because see, what happens, you get a lot of game play. Fenton, Mr. Woodson had one meeting, and didn't but a few people show up to rename the school because he didn't get what he wanted at that meeting, he had another meeting, because Flanches Matthews was suggesting. And they took that down. So they play games, so stop the game playing, I mean, we wanna know that we're together to do this thing.
Okay.
And I feel strongly about this thing, because I'm in that, you know. And I'm still there.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to speak to that, and the importance of having the support of the board, is because you have to go through all the barriers in the city, in reference to the Vernon School, you've got to go to the board education, you also have to go to the National Planet Commission, the National Capital Planet Commission, because that building has now been proposed and brought before the commission and asked to be considered as a landmark, and it is going to be given serious consideration, the name has to be changed back to the original name.
Okay, I wanna ask you a question. If we, as a board, authorize this, do we do this at this point, initiate it, or do we do it in consultation with other group before we do it?
It needs to have the support of as many organizations as will endorse it, because we're trying to, Mr. Woodson has already determined race in the building, if we're trying very desperately to hang on to it.
Okay.
I think what the committee is also asking us to need, put us in the name of the school or the mini bus, and when they go out to speak, they can say they speak in the name of the board. I think also the other thing, let's make, the board does require this, you can have, you know, suddenly I decide I'm on board of directors of Anacostia Museum, and I got my little pet project, and I say, well, I'm also on this committee. Well, I didn't say, I speak in the name of the Anacostia Museum. And, you know, so we gotta be very careful who we authorize and how we authorize the authority of the board to do it. And I think this is the correct way for us to, the committee comes and talks to us, and then we say, yeah, next.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion then, is that the committee be authorized to proceed the accomplishments?
We got three, I think, Stan. We got a motion? Second, Mr.?
How was that? Black case, no, not relevant.
I think it was Shaq who made a motion.
Mr. Dale seconded.
Mr. Dale, he seconded.
Some of the...
Well, I'd like to know whether or not, for the board, whether it can come from the president of board, director of the Anacostia neighborhood museum, or whether it can come from this committee. It seems to me that the strength, the strength of all the intensity of consideration given by the board of education would recognize a strong board of a particular organization. Now, this is from trying to find out whether or not the recommendation from the education committee is going to be accepted by the board, and the board itself signed the letter to the school board, requesting a change, or whether it's gonna be just one of the only thing.
Mr. Chairman, the intention was that the board take this action in the name of the board of directors of the Anacostia neighborhood museum. That was, that's what we're asking.
Now, what you said, Mrs. Smallwood, is that you will develop a strategy and the information, the recommendation, and bring it back to the board, is that what you said?
No. We discussed it in the meeting, in our committee meeting, and I was to bring the recommendation to the board, that the board take action to have the name restored, the original name restored.
The board has already taken action in delegating an authority to you, and it's up to you to reroute that back to the board for action there.
Right, right, right.
Reroute it back to the board?
Yeah.
Like that's what we had on?
In a formal way.
Mr. Chairman, is the question, if I understand the question at this point, if we agree on this motion that's on the floor, that Mrs. Smallwood's committee would at that point be responsible with staff to draft the letter, that would go out under your signature?
That's my impression, that's my understanding, but that's what would happen. The motion, yeah.
Would you have a chance to edit it? Edit it before it was prepared and filed for draft?
He'd be presented with a draft. He'd be presented with a draft.
Now, they're gonna do some other steps following this, because immediately we change the name of this other school, the question of publication is gonna come up, so we gotta prepare, committee to prepare, to work for that, we gotta give the authorities access. But that would be our prompt, great, that's that.
The recommendation, I believe, that you made, Mrs. Smallwood, is this, reference to the school. I mean, the transportation, that, I'm sorry.
And Mr. Chairman, the committee could also, as part of its continuing interest in these matters, communicate with other groups in the community who have similar interests and might know that they would join the sort, would join the name or whatever.
The committee would do that, you said?
I would think that would be a functional situation.
This is a motion to give the name, rename the school, right?
That, not that it returns, it's written and restored.
Restored to its original name.
Correct.
And the motion has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Questions?
Mr. Chairman, just in the case of strategy standing, do you think that in case of strategy on that particular proposition, that they might see the conflict immediately and throw it back to this suggestion group that, look, well, what you, we have to change this other school, so what's your suggestion? We can't move on this until you give us some agreement on how we move on the other school, which is a political, it's political then, but you're at least on the agenda.
Correct.
So we deal with the second question.
I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, that this letter, you know, you directly to the board of education, and I think our representative on the school board should receive a letter requesting his support for this endeavoring to be accomplished.
Well, Stan, Stan was suggesting that... Stan, Stan, you suggest, Representative, who are you talking about?
Representative Close.
Oh, Representative Close, oh, yeah, yeah, Representative Close, okay.
When we write letters like this, can we do it on the museum's stationery? Use museum resources?
That's, I think, Mr. Chairman, is that we haven't taken the initiative to do that prior to this time, in speaking, we've been speaking as individuals, but when the board agrees, it goes on stationery. And if somebody or somewhere wants to call questions, then the board backs it up, you see?
Would I be wrong in asking this question? In the support for the neighborhood museum, they said they were gonna contact certain other groups within the community for support. Would I be wrong in saying that they sent a flyer out saying, I am, in a hesitant time, asking that these people sign a formal document before the fact to the board, if they wanna know what they had received, changing the name back to the original?
We have, we have the board here that represents various interests throughout the community. Is that, I don't know if I follow you.
What I'm saying, you have groups that in Anacostia that may or may not support the, right? If it came for a case showdown, as you sometimes have, and you had an hearing, and you wanted to affirm your responses together to negative, if you had written communications to the effect that these people already affirmed, then you would be a better safe.
Oh, I agree with you, I think Stan spoke to that point, yeah, and I think the board, the committee will do that, the committee will follow up on that, that aspect of it, not the board to say...
Make sure that the problem office is right, so that you can have support.
Don't go out there, negative.
Well, we're going out there, but we're hoping, we're gonna inform the folk and urge them to support us in our efforts.
Right, right, right.
If there's no further discussion on that particular item, I think we better move to our next report. We got two thirty now, and we hope to be out of here two thirty. I think we got a report coming next from our director.
Mr. Chairman, did you deal with all of the propositions of that committee's?
Oh, I'm sorry, we got the bus transportation thing.
Something about the Fred Douglas Bridge?
The changing of the sign on the federal government's bridge.
I've got a problem with that, you know, if I may talk to that issue. It seems to me that one of the goals that we had, we established and recommended that the Nichols Avenue be changed to Martin Luther King Avenue, over the objection of Mr. Roy Hill, initiated by community version, that that bridge ought to become Martin Luther King Bridge, 11th Street, which continued all across the city, ought to become Martin Luther King Avenue, given a full citywide sweep. But that does not rest with an authority of council. And it seemed to me to have the Martin Luther King, have Fred Douglas Bridge coming up and going into Martin Luther King Avenue, I, you know, I think it would spread out, because, you know, I like to see a renamed some of these streets out there too, but it's still that in general. But, and we have authority of council. So I would have a perception for that. I really would, I'd just rather see us take the Fred Douglas Bridge, and everybody had another lane, and put that new lane in, and put a poet statue there, Frederick Douglass, you know, because he's very, you know, polygenic anyway, he was, see? A poet statue of him called Frederick Douglass Bridge, still a South Capitol Bridge.
Yeah, that's okay. They're talking about the sign, this is already existing.
That's what I'm hearing.
To expand that sign.
On South Capitol.
Yeah, well, you can do that, but they're getting, you know they're getting ready to widen, and if they go widen, they go take off one side, they do widen, widen, just do that at a price, put something there. When you go down to the council government, they get the money for that too, so go down there and get it, just, I'm on that thing, or you say a resolution, I'll present it to the council of government. You present it to me, you send it to me, I'll take it.
Reverend Lewis?
I, the confused, I think, I think, you know, South Capitol Street, what is popular on South Capitol Street, is fishing on the Doug, the Frederick Douglass Memorial Bridge, right? And I think the motion is for the sign there to be made larger. I think the other issue is extending Martin Luther King Avenue across the Davis Bridge, Martin Luther King Avenue, Martin Luther King Bridge, and then 11th Street become Martin Luther King.
I think the committee said something about...
They said change the sign.
That was the... Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the sign, 11th Street.
I see.
Okay, someone wanna state that in the form of motion, we gotta move along.
I so moved.
So move, second, move what?
The sign, the sign on the Douglass Bridge, be made larger.
Okay, is a second to Reverend Lewis's motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Questions?
No.
I'm still on it. The signs on the wall...
Mrs. What's your name?
Mrs. Edmonds.
Mrs. Edmonds, yeah.
Signs on the wall, register star, film.
It is, but we're not gonna do that. I wonder, are we ready to deal with issues that are, that erase so many other issues at this meeting right now? Do we have to address ourselves to every issue the committee brings up if we're doing something, half and backwards?
No, I think what we're doing, what we're doing is giving the committee authority to move, to have officially.
Mr. Chairman, if I might perform a clarification, I think the question is that, authentically and historically, that would have been the bridge in existence when Fred Douglass was alive, and it would have been the one that he'd gone across. All right, when we vote to move in large design on what's present in Fred Douglass Bridge, we also misrepresent the historical fact. So you are authenticating the mistake that was made, and I think that's the crucial issue that's still, you know, hit with here.
It's gonna be lost with Martin Luther King, that's the other thing, you look at the reality.
Can we defer this, can we defer this for further discussion and later? Table it for the moment?
I think on the, the progress of Fred Douglass Bridge, yes.
Yeah, we defer that, yeah, okay.
I think that, I think that's all moving.
All right, okay, just defer that. Just defer that.
Chairman, do you have to have a substitute motion table, or by common consent, common consent?
Yeah, common consent, common consent, we defer it, okay?
Okay.
All right, go to the next one, we gotta move.
That's all.
All right, that's all, okay. How about the bus thing, what are we gonna do about that? We need a motion for that? Has that... I think it was a motion, was it, we pass on that?
I motioned that, I motioned it.
Stan motioned. Stan motioned, we never got a vote on it. Yeah, we never got a vote on it. Stan, motion? Huh? Stan.
Mr. Chairman, can I state a motion to be formally moved if it's agreed upon?
Yeah, go ahead.
With regard to the bus arrangement, with regard to the bus arrangement, Mr. Adams, yeah, with regard to the bus arrangement, that the committee seek ways and means with Metro to see that if it's feasible for a bus to start and stop here at the museum.
Okay, you've heard the motion.
I second it.
I was just stating it. It can be so moved by anybody.
If I wanna move on it, okay.
And I second that motion.
John seconded it. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Next report is from Mr. John Gennard.
Mr. Chairman, can I beg to, because of time, defer to Mr. Mayo?
Mr. Mayo. Discussion on present exhibit. Can you do that in brief? Just be running behind.
Before I go into the discussion of present exhibit, I think there's three things I would like to bring to your attention. We are considering three exhibits now. One is the African exhibit, with the emphasis on the church and religion, which we're discussing now. The Buy Now Pay Later exhibit, which we've done considerable research on already, and we're in preparation stage on instrument for a survey in the SAC four area, in connection with that, working with GW University and Southeast House and the Federal Trade Commission. Those two exhibits, we haven't established a firm date on as yet, but we'll communicate that to you in writing as soon as we get. We're also planning an exhibit with the Bonnet Aidan Collection, which is a collection that has been in storage since the mid-fifties now, and is probably the most important collection of black artwork in the city of Washington. We do have a tentative date on that for January, February of the seventy-four, and I think that will give you some information on where we're headed on next year. As related to the discussion of question about the time limit on exhibits, it's my feeling, and I'm sure it's shared by seven, that the limit of an exhibit ought to be dictated by the content and form, et cetera, and also by the amount of energy, the amount of time spent on preparing it and so forth. And with those things in mind, we had a session here a couple of weeks ago, which was quite intense with the staff, and we called it a design in, to discuss the present exhibit, evaluate from our point of view, we tried to determine if in fact we could do anything with it to enhance it, to improve it, to make it more of an educational piece, et cetera. And quite a number of suggestions and ideas came out of that. We had very good participation from staff, personnel across the board, and also were quite a few visitors who came in and joined us, and gave us their opinions off the cuff, I might say. And in connection with that, we're planning now, in research stage and planning stage, to re-have this present exhibit, and it will be here until September at least. We hope to have the rehabilitation completed by the end of next month, which will be the end of June. Quite a bit of effort is going into that now, and a number of staff people are involved in various assignments in connection with this present exhibit.
Thank you, John. Next report, Mr. Terry Coleman, the report is on the social function to be scheduled, it's been scheduled for June fourteenth, next board meeting.
Yeah. At our last executive meeting, among the things that we discussed, was the idea of having some type of social function. And further thought on this idea was that maybe this could be the initial function of what we could call an annual function. And thought was given to the idea of why we should have an annual function, and as to what it should be, of which, what and why. And we came up with a number of ideas as to why we should have this type of affair, one being the fact that it would give us all an opportunity to meet and to know one another, and it would give us a chance to touch bases with people from Smithsonian, give us a chance to exchange views, develop ideas, and I think from meeting to date, it's a good example from the various reports that we've had of... a good example from the various reports that we've had of the many, many things that we've got to look into, the things that we need to do. And if we're going to be an effective advisory, uh, board, then we have got to get together, I think there has to be more, uh, dialogue between us, more exchanges of, of views as to how or what we want the museum to do, but where we have it. So tentatively, we've come up with, uh, a format, scheduled, say for the fourteenth of June, uh, a cocktail party, beginning at six, rather, six-thirty, seven o'clock, uh, serving cocktail, and from seven to seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, uh, would be, would fine with dinner would be served, it'll be bu- buffet style. Uh, and from eight to nine o'clock would be, uh, the time allocated for, uh, our guest The guest speaker, uh, would be Dr. Daniel, uh, Borsting, who's the Director of the Department of History and Technology. Now, the question arose as to where, uh, where should we have this function? Uh, we thought that ideally, since this will be the very first one, ideally, uh, the facilities that the Smithsonian Institution may to offer, uh, would be the place we should have it first, and specifically, uh, in the, uh, Administration Building, you do?
S I building.
S I building, and the Commons. Uh, we've toyed with the idea of, of having some form of music. I think at the present time, and I'm sure just what type of music it will be, whether it'll be a single or whether it'll be a combo, but anyway, uh, these are the plans as they, as they presently are standing. And if I may, uh, proceed further, I think that, uh, this may be the, uh, in other words, the idea is not to limit this type of affair to just once a year, uh, it could be regaining of other things, in other words, fundraising. Uh, with the initial meeting here and now, I think, uh, our fund, funding will be coming, uh, from the, um, uh, neighborhood museum. Uh, but I think if we all get some thought to the idea here and now, that, uh, that later on, we may use this type of format, uh, maybe for raising funds and work, people will invite outside of, for this affair, it'll be limited to the members of the staff, advisory, uh, committee, and board, rather, and the members of the Smithsonian Institution, and their spouses, and or friends.
Thank you, Terry. Um, I'd like to mention that on this committee with, uh, Terry is two of our youth advisory members, two, so that. Hold one. One, uh-huh. So we have a mixture of, of experiences and suggestions and work.
Mr. Chairman, on that, do you have any report about the speaker? I think that was.
We do, yeah, he just mentioned, Dr. Borsting will be with us.
Oh?
Yeah.
She changed her mind?
Yeah, she did, yeah. Uh, Carol Marsh, would you want to tell us a little something about Dr. Borsting?
Well, I was telling, um, Mr. Jones while we were having lunch, that Dr. Borsting actually went to college with Mrs. Shackleton's younger brother, and that Mrs. Shackleton knew Dr. Borsting when he was a, a young college boy. Um, he's the Director of the Museum of History and Technology, uh, and has been the Director for the last four years. He is a very well-known historian, um, he is very conservative in his views, and, um, a number of us differ with him, uh, as to, um, his point of view about history, and how it should be presented in a museum. Nevertheless, as he is now retiring from being Director of the Museum of History and Technology after four years as its Director, he's seen, um, an appropriate person to talk to the advisory committee from his point of view about American history, and how he thinks, um, a museum can interpret American history. And, uh, the thought is that he will present his point of view, and then all of us, uh, can ask questions, and we expect that there will be a lively dialogue and discussion about the matter. Um, and anything else about him, I think John has many of his books, if any of you want to read his books, uh, I suppose you could get them at the library, or borrow them from John, or buy them at a bookstore, they're somewhere in paperback, um, so that this might be some kind of preparation for the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, can I just say a word to supplement, uh?
Sure.
Mister Coleman's report?
Yeah.
Is that the date is June fourteenth, if anybody has any problem with that, I guess we ought to say it now, because changes have to be made, it isn't exactly set in concrete at this point, but after this meeting, it would be set in concrete. It's June fourteenth, as Terry has said, beginning at six-thirty. You got a problem with the time, we ought to know that. All of the board would be invited with their, and their guests, spouses included. All of the staff would be invited, as well as the list that we'll get from Carol Marsh, uh, that would identify S I Advisory Committee persons. Now, if there's anybody else that you think ought to be invited for whatever reason, is that we're open to that. Uh, certainly, we'd want to invite, in this period of getting familiar, some other staff people from the Smithsonian as well, notably Mister Julian Yu, and perhaps he would have suggestions about other Smithsonian personnel that ought to be there, so that we can sit with each other, drink and eat with each other, and they get a chance to know us, and we get a chance to know them. And this is the first, hopefully, in a series of events like this, where the board really begins to mesh in with what a museum is really all about as you see it, and to understand from them how it is in terms of their, my guy.
Well.
Yeah.
I so, is the speaker setting the timer?
Well, I, Mister Jones.
Yeah, I talked with Dr. Borsting last week, and he's very happy to join us on that day. He had some, uh, very busy schedule, and, uh, but he, uh, after I put a little sales talk on him, he, uh, kind of been his, um, because he says he's, he's in and out of town a great deal, uh, he would be very happy to join us on that day, June fourteenth. And I told him we would write him a letter, follow up my discussion with him. I might mention, one of our board members, Mister Dale, was the one who suggested the topic which Dr. Borsting said he'd be very happy to speak to, and that is.
We'll have to talk to him.
The topic, uh, Mister Coleman.
I'm sorry, I won't have it.
Well, Mister Dale can tell us. Dr. Borsting took it from his, uh, uh.
About, uh, his interpretation of philosophy of eternal history in museums.
Yeah, presentation of history, human events, that's right.
And I think it's well for us to understand all points of view, even though you may disagree with it. I think he can better define our own teachings on that, and understand what we are thinking if we know the way out.
I think, I think that you would find him to be entertaining as well as engaging from point of view, which may be in juxtaposition to your own, but to hear it, uh, no two ways about it when it comes to academic and, uh, steep in history, is that the guy has perhaps few equals in this country. But at any rate, as Miss Marsh has said, conservative, uh, and when you read some of his works on American history, uh, you perhaps won't find anything in that that the majority of you who are here that you even existed, uh, in American history, perhaps, uh, with slight note about blacks in this country. But at any rate, he came up in a time, in a generation, where, um, these kind of things weren't, uh, dealt with by his daughter. Uh, since the chairman, uh, has, uh, moved out to the front, uh, can we go back up to, uh, uh, discussion of sixth anniversary with Mister Dale and, and Miss Marsh?
Well, um, I don't think we will have time to discuss this, Mr. Staff, but I will, uh, outline what Carol and I thought might be some diversion from previous, uh, anniversary programs and exhibits. Uh, at least it's my thinking that, uh, we might do a self-study, which would entail a review of what has gone on here, could be described in exhibit form and documented on. And, uh, also, as part of examination, to have, uh, forums and open discussions with the community at the patronage museum, in such a way that we might get their understanding and feeling of what the museum is all about, and what they would want it to be, which would, uh, give us, uh, appraisal of what we've already done, and at least give us some indication as to the direction in which we move for the future. Well, uh, Carol, maybe you want to enlarge on that bit, what I was thinking most of the time.
Well, I guess, yeah, the discussion came out of the thought that perhaps people might want a different kind of celebration for the sixth anniversary from the kinds that we have had in the past, that is, the kind of street parties that was appropriate for the first several years, the beginning of a museum, but perhaps for the sixth anniversary, move in to some other areas and have, uh, perhaps a week-long celebration, a month-long celebration, and a series of meetings, discussions, lectures from the Smithsonian, lectures from other museums around the city, uh, or even around the country, that it would be a kind of museum education program, dealing with whatever topics, uh, people were interested in knowing more about, uh, so that it would be a s- setting up a, a schedule of meetings, discussions, programs, uh, whatever, uh, will be of greatest interest. Maybe we haven't explained it there.
I think it sounds like an extremely interesting way of, of looking back and celebrating it in some way, I think it's, I'd like to see you develop it, there's no such.
Yeah, I, I think at this point, I, I'm sorry I had to move out before you got started on that point, but, uh.
Well, um, firstly, thought in, in terms of moving away from having, and having a more or less set program that's created and anticipated by the museum and other groups that they have just that we would create, uh, we might have more involvement through forums, lectures, and, uh, discussions on what has gone past and what we would like to see. And I think it's important at quite time that we have this kind of expression, uh, in view of the community's plan that we, we develop, or, or the other way, and what the community sees in that, that they might, uh, want to engage in, as well as other programs.
Yeah. I think it sounds like a very innovative idea, and certainly something very exciting to come out of it. I think at this point, and this is what, well, June's here almost, so I think it's quite timely now that we get a committee together to, to get this project underway, and I'd like to, uh, appoint it.
Well, Mister Chairman.
Yeah.
I would like to move that the board either endorse this idea or reject it, and so that staff can move in one direction or the other.
You want?
Mister Chairman, I'd like to move that they endorse it.
Okay, okay, I second that motion. John second? You have a question?
Well, I didn't want to say what, the two persons I said, so they grabbed me, you know, they. Yeah, the museum has moved out in the community, and I'd say that the museum has a full role in trying to educate other people in the establishment of the world, but the kinds of people that the Anacost Museum is serving is a big part of the population of America that, uh, that since the museum has taken this population seriously, that other museums are likewise to do that.
Yeah, I have questions. They, I think most of us, you know, the board approved it so that the staff can get to work, it seems to me that we have given the staff an awful lot to do, I don't know, you know, I am the owner of the board, I'm not sure exactly how the, uh, board, or we can be the staff, it seems, you know, possibly this is something to do with, uh, some, uh, some other board that are directing the planning and getting it going, because I, you know, I don't think we have, uh, an infinite staff.
Well, the board is, yeah, well, in this connection.
The staff usually develops the program activities for the anniversary and all other exhibits and programs, so this is not addition, this is just changing the format from previous, uh, exhibits and, uh, anniversary.
Is there any reason why you can't have more active boards?
Oh, I think, I think the staff will, will input at any time, in any way.
But that's like, that's the like, you know, they would welcome, that's like if I had to provide, there you go. I, I think people would be involved, give them, do something.
Yeah. I think, I think there's a motion in the board, I think.
Bring you all that to the board, all the developer.
Yeah. I think that's a mechanic that we can work out, and.
Mr. Chairman, can I speak to that point?
Yeah.
Is that I think what Miss Matthews is saying, uh, this is just a clarification, uh, absolute in juxtaposition to the posture of the past, or that, that Mister Dale is suggesting must be. Um, and that means, as the way I read it, that, uh, we have a committee of two to date, they have a point of view and a perspective, a direction to move in, and I think what Miss Matthews is saying that the board, maybe with some more muscle added to it, and a couple more heads, could proceed to begin to develop over against staff doing it totally, or it be a partnership where staff meets with X committee on sixth anniversary, and there's a meeting of the minds, huh? So you've got the one posture of it being developed by the board, the second posture of it being developed by board and staff, the third posture, I think, the board gives staff general direction and guidelines, and the staff does the work. I think those are three, uh, different point of views.
I think we have disposed of this motion that's on the floor, it's been seconded, and I think. The thing that I had to burn, John, was that this was going to be worked out from mechanics or part of, of implementing. Dale's recommendation, that this would be worked out in the actual with the board. That's the meaning.
The motion only deals with moving in that direction of forums, seminars, symposia in a certain framework, that's all the motion does. The motion doesn't say how it's to be done. Mister Dale is suggesting, and TC is suggesting, how it would be done. So the motion just deals with moving in that direction.
Can you make an amendment to that, uh, motion?
We disposed of this one, then another motion is ignored.
Okay. That one has been moved and seconded, and all those in favor? The usual aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it.
I would like to make a motion that chairman appoint committee to work with the staff in developing, in developing the sixth anniversary. That's to work together, the staff and the committee.
I second.
I second.
Removed and seconded, that a chairman, uh, committee be appointed, or chairman be appointed, to work with the commi- with the staff on the sixth anniversary project. Seconded that motion, and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. The eyes have it. Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we have Alma Dale and Carol Marsh on this committee. And I'd like to ask for two more persons at least. Reverend Lewis, would you be able to work? Would you like to work with this committee in getting solved this thing?
Yes, sir, I would like to.
All right.
I'd like to have Ms. Matthews.
I need you.
Ms. Matthews, would you? Okay, we have two additions.
Any other volunteer would like to join us? We're going to have to have one.
Incidentally, if Reverend Mrs. Lewis get too pushed for babysitter, we're going to have to do something about that.
We'll bring you along, and you'll find somebody.
Okay. So we have a chairman, Mr. Dale, and three. One, two, three. And if Mr. Dale would like to expand it further, there's no objection to that, that you would discuss your... Tara Coleman says he'll work with it. So we have got a good committee going.
Mr. Dale, can I suggest you formalize your committee as soon as possible to meet?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Hutchinson?
Yes, right. Next on agenda, Mrs. Hutchinson will present us with the Bibles.
And historical notes.
And historical.
I would like to incorporate historical notes in the Bibles. I would say that everybody could go home before we got to this part of the agenda. And we would like to extend this on staff because we do not, and will not have the capability of representing this profession, we hope. Some board members are very grilling. They have learned to let us have some looks and glimpses at them when they were little people. We're going to be kind of trying to introduce these board members in a rather informal and not so academic form that becomes kind of stuffy. Mr. Anderson is gone. We're going to do this in alphabetical order according to those which you cannot suggest would be in this board meeting. Now proceed with that, I'd like to sketch first. Stanley J. Anderson. On September 24th, 1927, a son was born, James and Ethel Anderson. Mr. and Mrs. Anderson, who residents of the Anacostia community, lived on Nichols Avenue, Southeast. The Andersons were to have eight children, three boys and nine girls. His new son was named Stanley Anderson, fourth of the eighty-two. Stanley's grandfather, John A. Anderson, was an early settler of Barry's Farm. Is listed in the city directory for the year 1872 and is a founding member or was a founding member of the Bethlehem Baptist Church. Educated at the burning school standing in our day and known as Nichols Avenue School, Stanley Anderson graduated from Armstrong Technical High School in 1944 and Howard University in 1948. While employed as a roving leader and working on the Barry's Farm playground, Stanley met and married Virginia Ingram. In 1951, Stanley Virginia became the parents of a daughter named for her mother and father. They called each child Stanley's. In 1958, a son, Stanley, was born. An elk and a member of the Jay Finley Hostile Lodge, Stanley Anderson enjoyed golf, fishing and cricket. Obviously, has not had the time to pursue since his appointment to the D.C. City Council. However, on weekends, you might see him in Anacostia riding his bicycle. It might be of interest for you to know that Stanley J. Anderson is the second resident from the Barry Farms community to serve on the legislative council of the District of Columbia. The first was Solomon G. Brown, founder of the Hillsdale Civic Association, of which family is a member. Mr. Brown was elected to represent the first district in the District of Columbia in the early 1870s. We welcome to this board directors of the Anacostia Native Museum, our friend and neighbor, Stanley J. Anderson. Second sketch is of one of our younger and new members, Mr. John Blake. The third child, who belonged to John Earl and Mary Daisy Blake, arrived at Easton General High School on June 7th, 1951, at 1:30 in the morning. It had been decided that this son would be named for his father. The school name is John Earl Westfield. The mother, after looking at her name in the book, decided that the name was longer than the baby was taken. And so it was decided that this little boy would be named John William Blake. Shortly before his second birthday, John and his family moved to their present home in Anacostia, thirteen twenty-eight Cowards Terrace, Southeast. Now, the Blake's have four children, three sons and a daughter. At the age of five, John was enrolled in the kindergarten at the Lucy Hope Elementary School. Later, he was transferred to the James G. Vernon Elementary where he completed his sixth grade. John attended the Frederick Douglass Junior High School and Anacostia Senior High School, graduating with honors in 1967 and 1972. In high school, he participated in sports and enjoyed playing baseball and basketball. Mr. Russell Lombardi, principal of Anacostia High School, remembers that John was a young man who demonstrated concern for his school and his community. While at Anacostia, John was awarded a certificate for his involvement in student events. And on a student, John also received awards for academic achievement. Beginning as a neighborhood youth coworker in 1965, he came to the director, he became the director of the Youth Development Division at Southeast Neighborhood House in 1969. He is now employed with the United States Department of Labor as a management analyst. John Blake presently serves as volunteer coordinator of Youth Affairs in Southeast. And on August 15th of last year, organized the Southeast Athletic Association, concerns youth in his neighborhood between the ages of ten to twenty-one. Activities for the group are made possible through independent fundraising. While community friends seem to take up all of John's time, his mother says that he still enjoys baseball, basketball, and most of all, cooking, and hobby he enjoys very much. We welcome John Blake as another friend and neighbor to the board of the Anacostia Native Museum. And last, but not least, our chairperson, Kathy Lewis. On January 3rd, 1943, a baby girl was born at Silver Street, Maryland. A proud addition to the Green family living in a tall wood complex, she was named Catherine Mandell Green. In 1945, the family moved to a new home in Chevy Chase, Maryland, where her father still resides. From 1951 to 51, Kathy lived in Paris, France. From 1956 to 1958, she lived in Seir in Belgium. An extensive traveler, Kathy has been to French, Ecuador, Africa, Angola, Uganda, Rwanda, I'm sorry, yeah. Is that my name? Rwanda, Burundi, two found two countries, Ghana, Togo, the homie Portugal and Belgium. Kathy used to waterski every weekend on the Congo River. And as she says, and I quote, "live to tell love." Kathy entered with us at the Chevy Chase High School and graduated in 1961. The same year, she entered Howard University, and after a few interrupts, was graduated in 1968. Managing in government and history, Kathy entered Maryland University where she completed one semester gradus status. On December 29th, 1962, Catherine Mandell Green was married to Reverend Larry Lewis at New York Advent Presbyterian Church. The Lewis's are now the proud parents of a fifteen-month-old son named James Kirk. Other members of Kathy's family are her father and two sisters, Elan, who lives in Nottingham, England, and Sabilla, who lives in the Philippines with her husband in Beijing. After making their home in the Codosa and Capitol Hill communities, the Lewis's moved to Anacostia and the Stanley garden apart. They now live in their home in 1531 Fifth Street, Southeast, with their young son, and Kathy says, "The crazy cat," who answers the telephone. Even when you call the Lewis's home, they spring forth answers, "Don't hang up." It just takes a moment for Kathy to call Kathy's phone. Who like to know Kathy Lewis, our friendly neighbor to the board. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
The motion tends to hit to everybody. And I think it's more alphabetical order.
I'm not sure about you.
Well, everybody...
Because Dale would proceed Louis. We'll get back to board roster.
Well, we say thank you, Mrs. Hutchinson, for all your work. You managed this presentation of board members. I wish I had been in her last meeting, I got two or eight meetings. Well, if there's no further business, our meeting is adjourned. And I apologize for keeping so long, but I think you'll agree this has been certainly worth our time. And maybe next time, we'll eventually get around to two-hour meetings.
Mr. Chairman, one remark, two remarks. Number one, with regard to what I was supposed to say, I would just say this, that with regard to that building, is that we're out of the willingness on it. We've got agreements from the National Capitol Patrick Commission except for one tiny thing like an air conditioner being exposed on the roof. The architect has covered it in the building. And we have to come before the 31st of this month to get finally ready. Bids for the job are on the street. The bid opening will be the 31st of this month. Now, there's a base bid for just a shelf and a few things in it, and a several alternate so that we can hopefully get to within $200,000 in the head. If we don't get the bids coming in like $400,000 for the base, it's going to be back in the wilderness to find $200,000 more dollars. So we're out of the willingness on it, and we hope to have to build it up. We're projecting it hopefully later in January. That's based on a whole lot of alternate things. The second thing that I would say is that next Thursday, know about 2022 museum, musicologists and curators are going to come here at 3:30 to 5:00, and between 3:30 and 5:00, to find out what the Anacostia museums are on. They represent museums in basic in Europe, and there's one museum director from France. So I would invite you to come on Thursday afternoon, if you can find time, to meet these people who will be representative of museums in Europe and Africa. So the staff will plan a program for them. But we would certainly like to make introductions of board members, as well as perhaps have board members who are here, aside from meeting them, say a word about Anacostia Museum. But we will have a program in addition to that.
What time is that?
They'll be here 3:30, it's on 3:30. They'll have to leave at 5:00. Now, you know how people are moving, and they might not get here till 4:00. But we'll be prepared, and if people come by, we'd be happy, more than happy to have them. Those, thank you very much.
There's one other thing I'd like to, and maybe we're not in a position today to make a decision. We have it on the 14th of June, you know, sort of get together at the museum, which we consider, I suppose, our next board meeting, which will be a meeting of fun and sort of getting together with each other. Whether we want to have another meeting during the summer, say July, I would have some reservations about it. I'm pretty sure you probably would too, because that is a vacation month for many people. You need a rest. So I think the executive board might be able to sort of carry things on during June and July. But certainly, you can sort of look forward to the top of your head to hearing from us, I'd say by mid-August or maybe, yeah, mid-August, because that would be just before the anniversary thing gets underway. So I suppose June 14th, we really have to take care of things. And as I said, the executive may have to take care of matters in between. If there's a need for emergency call meeting, we'll have to get in touch with you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
How about my, our committee? Will we meet next Saturday? Reverend Lewis, Matthew, Terry, and John Blake? We'll need you all.
Yeah, that's just what I... You must say, "Me, my..."
Beg your pardon?
We'll need you all on this committee. So we can get these exact here. Uh, same time, 12:30. Okay, gentlemen? 12:30, next Saturday. All right?
Okay, the meeting is adjourned.